Evening gentlemen and your families. It is my honor, the governor has commissioned each of you upon your election by the citizens of Oconee County to take your respective seats on the Board of Education. In his absence, he has directed me to give you your oaths. So that is why we're here tonight. Gentlemen, if you will raise your right hand, if you will repeat after me, I'm going to give you your oaths in their entirety and then just ask that you swear or affirm to them upon completion. You will have the oath of office first and then I will give you your loyalty oath as is required by Georgia statute. I will say aye, you will say your name, and then I will complete the oath and you will just swear or affirm upon completion. Aye. A citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Oconee County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia. I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I will well and truly faithfully discharge all the duties required of me by law as a member of the Board of Education of Oconee County to the best of my ability. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And that I will well and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I have met the residency requirements of this office. So help me God. Office, this is your loyalty oath. Again, aye. A citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Oconee County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia.
First item of business is election of BOE officers, and the first one is the BOE chair. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Michael Ransome.
Have any seconds?
Second.
All approved. Passes five zero. Next item is BOE vice chair. Any nominations?
I would like to nominate Amy Parrish.
Ms. Parrish, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Hammond, all approved. Passes five zero. Next is legislative liaison. Any nominations?
I would like to nominate Ryan Hammack.
Second.
Second.
All approved. Passes five zero. Next item of business is the agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack.
Second.
Mr. Tool. Passes five zero. Next is the minutes approval. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Tool.
I'll make a second.
Mr. Hammond, need a vote. Passes five zero. Next, student recognitions, Mr. Caulkwood.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. We have several folks to recognize this evening, so if you'll step down, we will do so. As you move forward, I will point out that the art displayed this month is from Dove Creek Elementary. These beautiful pictures will be on display this evening and also in the, on the monitors in the hallway throughout the rest of the month. We thank Dove Creek Elementary for sharing these images with us, and their instructor is Karen Phillips. First this evening, the board will recognize the January Pursuit of Excellence Award winner for leadership employees, Mike Stanton of Columberry Elementary. Mr. Stanton will receive a $50 Visa gift card and golf umbrella provided by Peach State Federal Credit Union, additional gift cards from Chopson Hops and Rosie's Hometown Meats, and a commemorative plaque from Oconee County Schools. Mr. Stanton, I'm going to have you stand in the middle, please. And I'm going to read some comments from, from your nomination form. Mike Stanton exemplifies outstanding leadership. He embodies the true essence of a servant leader. His kindness and genuine care for both staff and students shine through in everything he does. He consistently prioritizes what is best for our students, making a meaningful difference every day. He is an excellent administrator who goes above and beyond every day to help staff members be successful. He is always willing to help. His interactions with students, parents, and coworkers are guided by empathy, respect, and an unwavering commitment to fostering a positive and supportive school environment. His integrity, vision, and passion for education make him a respected leader in the school and the community. The January Pursuit of Excellence Award winner, Mike Stanton. Next, the board will recognize the Class 4A state champions in football, the North The players are Troy Aldrich, Tennant Allen, James Alred, Braden Autry, Carter Avera, Christian Barnett, Brooks Benson, Nolan Bloom, Tyler Bluest, Elijah Bryce, Maddox Bryce, Kamari Brooks, Benjamin Brown, Ollie Buckley, Jackson Benel, Luke Burnett, Preston Canton, Jack Christiansen, Mac Collins, Mason Cooper, Brooks Dalton, Luke Delay, Dallas Dickerson, J.T. Doster, Porter Drudge, Rash Ellerby, Darian Elder, Patrick Elliott, Michael Fabris, Harrison Faulkner, A.J. Fick, Colin Foster, Landon Foster, Trenton Gilli, Ford Goddard, Braxton Goolsbee, LaDamian Harris, Charlie Hawkins, Nathan Hires, Desmond Jackson, Ruben Harrio Silva, Emmett Jones, Henry Judge, Wes Kearney, Reese Kendall, Noah King, Cash Latrell, Harrison Luke, Joby McCannon, Bryant McCants, Seth McElveen, Kelvin Millington, Carson Mink, Carter Mink, Carter Moon, Griffin Now, Kai Nwani, Carson Petway, Logan Phelps, Jack Phillips, sorry, Zack Phillips, Mason Pilcher, Jonathan Pinkle, excuse me, Jonathan Perkel, Nicholas Pollak, Caleb Post, Ivan Rodriguez Ramirez, Will Richardson, Landon Roldan, Carson Rollins, Dylan Sargent, Bennett Shadburn, Jacob Smith, Lucas Smith, Whit Smith, Joe Stanley, Owen Stewart, Jeremy Tanksley, Brody Taylor, Ben Verstrait, Shay Verstrait, Brooks Wardlow, Brody Whipking, and Landon Williams. The coaches are Tyler Arnt, Rob Melton, Chad Blevins, Kurt Dorman, Jamie Lucas, Justin Lawrence, Josh Hawkins, Brandon Gobert, Will Peters, and Brad Williams.
Gosh, that looks so good.
All right, Mr. Carter. All right, last one. All right, ready? One, two, three. Go Titans! All right, parents and friends. Okay, congratulations, guys. There was more than eight?
Yes. There was. Next, the board will recognize the state runners-up in GHSA Division II Flag Football, the North Oconee Titans. The players are Addie Argo, Hayden Argo, Hazel Beam, Lily Clark, Catherine Cooper, Taylor Dillard, Lexie Favreau, Kyler Hammond, Emery Harden, Nolan Heron, Zoe Hill, Hayden Holland, Taylor Kelly, Ava Lastly, Callie Mashburn, Ellen Pasternik, Elizabeth Patterson, Aniston Scott, Asher Sinclair, Anzeli Solodki, Addie Stewart, Riley White, and Blake Whipking. The coaches are Nicole Omera, Scott Whipking, Joshua Clark, and Nick Wilson.
Okay, fourth row of y'all will always scoot that way a little bit. Board members, if y'all will find a gap, there you go. Can't see you ladies. Do you come for me right here?
Can we bring it off to the front?
Let me try that real fast, then we'll bring it back in front. Okay, back row, y'all come up front.
Watch out for technique.
All right, y'all, here we go. That looks great. Mr. Carter? Hold up. Ready? One, two, three. Go Titans! Family and friends.
And that concludes recognitions.
All right. All right. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. It's an honor to be here tonight with you to present our Dove Creek Points of Pride. Since the beginning, Dove Creek has committed to building a positive school climate for our students, families, and staff. Our belief is simple yet powerful. We rise by lifting others. This philosophy guides us every day as we work as a team to support one another and empower our students to reach their fullest potential. At Dove Creek, our guiding principles for fostering high student achievement are clear. We prioritize building and nurturing a positive school culture while ensuring high levels of student engagement. We believe these two pillars, combined with rigorous instruction, are essential to driving student growth and success. Tonight, our team is here to speak to you regarding our comprehensive Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports Program. Since implementing this program in 2018, we are pleased to share with you all the positive impact it has had on our sweet school.
My name is Bailey Gravitt, a third grade teacher at DCES. We have established our PBIS program to establish clear expectations for students across all areas of our school. Our PBIS motto, Dragons Are On Fire, Focus, Inspiring, Respectful, and Empathetic, guides us daily. The goal of PBIS isn't perfection, but fostering an environment that supports continuous growth. Our PBIS team meets monthly to review data and brainstorm ways to ensure DCES continues to be a magical place. One of the decisions from our PBIS team was to research and develop ways to engage and motivate our third through fifth grade students. From this collaboration, our third through fifth grade housing system was born.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Gatchell, a fifth grade teacher at Dove Creek Elementary School. Since the launch of our house system at Dove Creek, we have witnessed significant growth in our PBIS framework. The house system has transformed the way we approach behavior and character development for our three through five students, is created a sense of belonging among students, fostering a supportive environment where they feel valued and motivated to excel. We continue to strive for excellence in our PBIS initiatives with the goal of becoming a distinguished PBIS school. Our quarterly house meetings are the cornerstone of this effort, where we focus on fire behavior. These meetings allow us to review our progress, celebrate successes, and realign our strategies to ensure that our students not only meet, but excel, exceed behavioral expectations. Thank you for your continued support of our initiatives. We are excited to build on this foundation and further enhance the positive impact of the house system on our school community. We have a video that showcases our passion our school has for their houses.
would love to share their pride for their house with you.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak about our school tonight. My name is Kyra Wonnay, and I'm a fifth grader.
My name is Edith Gordon, I am a fourth grade altruismo.
We are here to share about our house altruismo. Our house is called the House of Givers.
The heart sits at the top of the crest because the heart is where generosity was born.
At each house meeting, the house with the highest amount of points gets awarded the top house. We even have a spirit stick to pass along.
We try our best to, we try our best to earn the most points by showing fire behavior each month.
Being an altruismo means that I belong to a group of people that cheer each other on in moments of excitement and when things are challenging.
To me, being part of altruismo means giving my absolute best in everything I do. Because we uplift ourselves to our, to our house members and our entire school.
My name is Usam Safadi, and I am in the fifth grade.
My name is Kate Bishop, and I'm a third grader, which is the year we were able to be sorted into our houses.
We were chosen by the house rever by pulling a blue-colored bracelet from the sorting hat.
Our house is called the House of Dreamers.
Our symbol is the unicorn, which symbolizes our belief that magic is possible when we work hard to achieve our goals.
At our house meetings, we go all out, dressing in our house colors and cheering each other on for being awarded top three of the month.
To me, being a rever means embracing the power of dreaming big and sharing the joy of accomplishment with my house.
At first, I wasn't sure about being a rever, but once the house chose me, I realized it was meant to be. My older brother was in rever too.
My name is Owen Stanishevsky, and I am a fifth grader. We are honored to be here today to represent our school and share the spirit of the House of Friendship, Amistad.
My name is Maggie Melton, and I am a third grader. Friendship and Amistad means standing by each other during challenges.
Our house color, red, symbolizes the passion and energy we bring to our relationships and our commitment to making a positive difference in the world.
Being a part of Amistad means we are ambassadors of friendship inside and outside of school. I love being in the House of Amistad because I've learned the importance of kindness and putting myself into other's shoes.
Being a part of this house for the past two years has allowed me to take on leadership
My name is Bodhi Hayes, and I'm a fourth grader.
My name is Camila Gutierrez, and I am in third grade.
We are proud to be here today to share what it means to be a part of the House of Isabindi, the House of Courage.
Isabindi is a Zulu word that means courage. In our house, we learn to be brave to face challenges head-on.
Our house is known for its resilience. We know that life isn't always easy, but in Isabindi, we stand tall and never give up.
The color green represents Isabindi, symbolizing the courage to thrive in any situation we encounter.
Being in the House of Isabindi has allowed me to tackle challenges.
Being in Isabindi has taught me that I can go to any adult in my house when I face something challenging. I don't have to do it alone.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to grow in, in school that values courage and strength, helping us become the best version of ourselves.
My name is Kim Griffith, and I am the proud assistant principal at Dove Creek Elementary School. At Dove Creek, we focus on both academic success and emotional and social development of our students, fostering a positive school culture that promotes engagement and connection. This approach has led to a decrease in discipline referrals, increased opportunities for positive recognition, and impressive survey results, with 96.7% of students and 100% of staff reporting feeling connected. Our academic growth is equally notable with CCRPI content mastery data rising from 91.3% in 2019 to 100% in 2024. These successes reflect the power of systems like the house model, which continues to drive our school's overall achievement and well-being. Thank you for your continued support, and at this time, we would love to give each of you the opportunity to be sorted into a house. Our fifth graders would like to have permission to approach the bench for the hat to choose you.
Sure. Yeah. Hold on.
Okay. All right, let's see. What do we have?
Isabindi! Rever! Awesome!
There's another Isabindi! All right. Yay! Amistad! There we go. Altruismo. Oh, Mrs. O's gonna get sorted too. Where is she? Thank you so much for having us tonight, and just a little treat from us. We hope that your behavior is also on, on fire. Respectful and empathetic. Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all. Dr. Stansel, will you go?
Yeah. You want to do a picture? Okay. Would y'all like to do a picture? Maybe y'all can come up here.
Can I find you and get your house people?
I know. Thanks for coming up here. Yes.
Who's trying to find your house?
Me. Thank you.
All right, it must be hard to follow that up, but Dr. Branch, superintendent's report.
Yes, I, I just want to say what a great job our, our students and our staff do each and every day. And I think I, I share for our, our community that this Points of Pride piece that we do each and every meeting is well worth the time that we dedicate to see the great things that are taking place there. So, thank you to the students and staff of Dove Creek. And yes, the, the cookies will be enjoyed. Just a, a brief report tonight from superintendent's chair. First and foremost, want to congratulate our, and welcome our two new board members, Mr. Hamm and Mr. Tool, and thank you for your service. I want to congratulate our leadership that's been elected tonight, Mr. Ransom for being the chair, Ms. Parrish for vice chair, and Mr. Hammack for agreeing to be the legislative liaison. Your service to our community and to our students is to be commended. So, we appreciate your outstanding leadership and look forward to working with each of you. As you know, we started a new semester as we returned back from Christmas break, and it's well underway, but not without a little bit of excitement. As we know, January is traditionally our weather month, and it was not to be denied. So, we did have our first weather day on Friday, snow day. Thankfully, we caught off school for the safety of our students and staff, and our community was rewarded with a, a great memory and lifetime experience for, for our families. Just want to take a minute to commend our leadership team that goes about each and every day helping make those decisions. Our weather teams comprised of Kevin Yancy, Justin Cofer, and Ryan White. And we want to thank those guys, along with all the other staff members that help provide the information that's necessary to make the difficult call on whether we will have school or not. We always assume that our students and staff like for us to have school, and so we take that approach. But obviously, in this situation, it was necessary and appropriate to do so. Now, as we enter the new semester, believe it or not, we will be entering the hundredth day of school next week. I'm sure there'll be a healthy debate on which day is ninety-nine and which day is a hundred now. I'll leave that for our principal level leaders to determine. But we, it, it's just amazing how fast the, the years go by each and every year and to be at this particular point in what's been an outstanding school year so far. And we have our first holiday of the year that is scheduled. MLK Day will be on Monday, and so we will be out of school in commemoration of that holiday. Board members, want to thank you for your time earlier this, this afternoon to kick off our seventh annual Villa program. That program, for those in the audience that are not aware, has twenty-four parents, two from each of our twelve schools, that dedicate their time and will attend six different sessions, learn more about the school system. And today, we were able to start that off with meeting board members and talking about the roles and responsibilities of the board. So, thank you for giving of your time there. And just appreciate your, your support and participation in that and all the time that you will continue to give to this community. Because we've had lots of different recognitions and opportunities, and our staff members have much more to share, that will conclude superintendent's report unless there are questions.
Thank you, Dr. Branch. Next up, we have presentations and discuss, discussions. Dr. Stansel with Teaching and Learning Report. Welcome, Dr. Stansel.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. The January twenty twenty-five Teaching and Learning Report contains one item of information and no action items tonight. The first item of information is our Georgia Works Alignment Grant update. The district received the Workforce Alignment Grant in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. As part of the grant process, OCS counselors, teachers, administrators, and district leaders have attended the Governor's Workforce Summit, Georgia's Economic Development Conference, as well as CTA branding workshops to learn more about economic development practices and to analyze the correlation between our current CTA pathway offerings and business and industry needs. Throughout the process, CTA teachers have worked with program advisory committees to analyze labor market data and determine the specific needs of industries within Oconee County and the surrounding areas. Currently, OCS staff are reviewing the newly released statewide high-demand career list. We are proud to announce that all of our pathways and program offerings are aligned to careers on that list. We will continue to work to prepare OCS students to meet the needs of the future workforce. And that concludes the Teaching and Learning Report unless there's any questions.
I actually do have a question. Is there any specific area, Dr. Stansel, that is growing, whether it's healthcare or engineering? What are you seeing the most from that study where we may want to encourage our students to participate in those classes?
Healthcare is definitely a big, a big one and definitely prevalent in our area, but we're looking at lots of different things for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stansel. Next, we have Student Services and Dr. Yancy.
Good evening, Dr. Branch and board members. The January twenty twenty-five Student Services Report contains four items of information and no action items. The first item of information is the School Choice Timeline for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Applications for the School Choice window were made available on Friday, November twenty-second at four P M. The window for School Choice will close this Friday, January the seventeenth at four P M. Decision letters will be mailed on Friday, January twenty-fourth. Applications remain available on the district website and via links on the district's social media accounts. This year, all twelve schools are available for School Choice. And to make this process easier for our families and to support the planning purposes of school personnel, School Choice became a decision for K five and six twelve only. So, families decide on an elementary school and then only make one decision for a secondary path once in sixth grade. This is a change, if you remember, from previous years, as families had to choose for elementary school, then middle school, and then again in high school. The second item of information is our annual participation in the survey system from the Georgia Department of Education. The Georgia School Climate Surveys are designed to measure the quality of school life by measuring student and adult experiences related to academics, relationship, relationships, safety, and the learning environment. Surveys are offered for four groups of stakeholders, our students, our teachers, our staff, and our families. The parent survey window opened on December the second and will remain open until March thirty-first. The teacher and staff surveys opened on January the sixth. The student surveys, which are given to students in third grade through twelfth grade, will open on February third. Parents and guardians do have the ability to opt out their child or children from participating in the surveys. Principals sent this information to home to parents and guardians via email on January the sixth. The third item of information is an update on our annual participation in the Secret Santa Program. For those unaware of the Secret Santa Program, this is an outstanding show of support by members of our community to those in need during the holiday season. This initiative is led by our school's social workers, school counselors at each school campus. Their efforts, along with many community partners, served six hundred and twenty-eight kids from two hundred and eighty-eight families this year. I would like to offer a big thank you to the Oconee County community, our school counselors, our school's social workers, and to many, many community partners who continue to support and give annually to ensure our Secret Santa Program is a success. The fourth item of information is an update on the district's memorandum of understanding with the Oconee County Sheriff's Office regarding the School Resource Officer Program. As you are aware, the tragic event at Appalachia High School occurred on September the fourth. On September the sixteenth, you authorized the superintendent to collaborate with Sheriff Hale to develop an agreement that would establish comprehensive law enforcement presence at all twelve of our schools. Following this directive, we promptly began gathering sample School Resource Officer Memorandums of Understanding from districts within our RESA. These were shared during the October seventh meeting, along with other safety updates. In November, we presented a draft MOU for your review, and over the next month, worked closely with the Sheriff's Office to refine it to a mutually agreeable document. On December the ninth, the Board of Education formally approved the MOU. The following day, the finalized document was sent to both the sheriff and Board of Commissioners, along with a request for official action. At this time, discussions continue between the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, the superintendent and his team, and the sheriff and his staff as we continue to work through the process of reviewing the MOU. At the same time, via direction by U R Board, we continue to actively review school systems that operate with a school-based police force. This includes studying implementation guidelines, associated costs, and best practices to ensure that all potential avenues for enhancing school safety are thoroughly researched and explored. This concludes the Student Services Board Report unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Yancy.
Yes, sir.
Up next, Technology with Mr. McCullers. Welcome, Mr. McCullers.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. Oconee County Schools Technology Services Report for January thirteenth has one item of information and no action items. Information item number one is the OCS Student Technology Competition. The Oconee County Schools Student Technology Competition is an annual event open to students in grades three through twelve. This extracurricular opportunity allows students to showcase their creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking skills through the use of technology. On December eighteenth, twenty-six students representing nine of our schools were selected as district winners. These students will go on to, to participate in the Northeast Georgia Regional Student Technology Competition this Saturday, January the eighteenth, at the Bera Arts and Sciences Academy in Wyner, Georgia. The winners of the regional competition will have the opportunity to compete in the Georgia Student Technology Competition in March. All school and district-level winning projects are highlighted digitally in the OCS Student Technology Competition Showcase, which has been linked on our website. And that concludes the Technology Services Report unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCullers.
Thank you.
Human Resources, Mr. Cofer.
Evening, board members, Dr. Branch. The Human Resources Report for this evening contains one item of information and one action item. Our item of information is a request for proposal for a benefits broker. While we currently have a benefits broker in place and have received excellent service, we believe it is important to periodically review the market to ensure our partnering with the best available for our school system. Just as we routinely evaluate our benefits offerings, we must also assess whether our current broker continues to deliver the most competitive pricing and exceptional service. The market is constantly evolving, and new brokers may offer innovative solutions or cost-saving opportunities that could benefit our employees or the district. Reviewing the market helps us confirm that we are still getting the best value and service for our employees in the district while also staying aligned with best practices in the industry. This process is not a reflection of dissatisfaction with our current provider, who we anticipate will also submit a proposal for consideration. We wanted to inform you this evening that we're in the final stages of preparing this request for proposal and look forward to embarking on this very important process. Our action item for this evening is the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven Academic Calendar. As you know, we placed this calendar on the table for public comment and review at our December ninth board meeting. We have received limited feedback from the community, and at this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation for the board to approve the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven Academic Calendar as presented. This concludes what Human Resources has prepared for this evening, but we remain available for any questions.
Yes, Justin, could you please share the teacher, community input that created, that led to the calendar that we see right here? What all went into that?
Sure. So, we start with our advisories, which includes the superintendent, student, parent, and teacher advisories. They shared last year and again this year, the concern that they would like to see us include a fall, what they call a fall break or a week-long break in October. So, based off that feedback, this year, we created two versions, what we call our standard version, and then the version that you see here tonight. We shared those again with the advisories for feedback. It was overwhelmingly positive. We then proceeded to share those with leadership and then ultimately out with the entire district staff, along with a Google form that they could submit their feedback on.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cofer.
Absolutely.
Next, we have Business Services with Mr. Adams.
Good evening, Dr. Branch and board members. Business Services has seven items of information tonight and no action items. Our first item of information is our December Cash Balance Report. As you can see, we have a healthy balance in there. This represents a one point three-two percent increase over last month. Our state funding projections are currently very stable, but we'll continue to monitor our funds as the session started today, and we'll see how that goes for the next few months, if there are any changes to, to our funding that we'll receive. Our cash, cash balance again is strong, and we are positioned well to meet our financial obligations that we have. The second item of information is our list of vendor payments in December. We paid four hundred and fifty-one different vendors one point eight million dollars for the month. Our third item of information is our revenue and expenditures, where we would expect to be at fifty percent. We are currently showing at fifty-one percent. I would like to point out, this includes about one point three million dollars in encumbered funds, which is about one point two percent. So, if you look at that figure and take into account, we're right where we should be at fifty percent for the, where we should be. Our fourth item of information is our ELOS Collection Report. We have an increase over last month of four point seven percent and a six point four-four percent increase over this time last year. So, again, our ELOS collections are very strong to go along. That's why our cash balance is so strong. Our fifth item of information is our ELOS six report. This information has been updated through December. Our sixth item of information is our Federal Funds Report. Just want to again remind you and the new board members, this is reimbursement-based funds. Usually, there's a month or two lag before we get the funds back from the different agencies that we get our funds from. Most of it comes from the DOE. Our seventh item of information, and I'd like to go over some of the information about HB five eighty-one and the, where we currently stand with where we're going forward. We have placed a legal required ad for the hearings for HB five eighty-one stating the intent to opt out, which was a requirement of the law. The law said that's what the language had to be. So, that's why you see the ad in front of you. We advertised in two local newspapers of general circulation, the Athens Banner-Herald and the Oconee Enterprise. And the ad and press release are also on our social media accounts, as also required by HB five eighty-one. We will hold three meetings on these dates listed, January twenty-third, twenty-eighth, both at six P M, and then again on February fourth for our third meeting at four P M on these dates, and this opportunity to hear from the public on their thoughts. A little background about HB five eighty-one. It was passed to address tax issues in Georgia. It established a, a floating homestead exemption that limits the annual increase in property tax assessments on homestead properties to the inflationary rate by the State Revenue Commissioner. They haven't determined that rate yet, but our understanding from our trainings is they're looking at- looking at the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. The cap took place on January 1st, as it was approved on the statewide referendum back in November. The opt-out provisions, local governments have the opportunity to opt out. That's one of the reasons we're exploring where we are going forward with y'all. The process needed to start by January 1st and must be completed and submitted to the Secretary of State's office by March 1st of 2025. This is a one-time decision with a long-term economic impact for the board. The opt-out process requires, as I mentioned, advertisements in the general circulation newspaper and to hold those three public hearings prior to any adoption of a board resolution, if y'all move in that direction. Some of the impacts on the school district, this could significantly change our impact on our property tax revenues for the school district and student services. Last month, I did show you a slide. You know, we're looking at about this last seven years, about 13 million, 13.6 million we would have lost in revenue. The last three years, averaging about 2.7 million. So if you, for those new board members that weren't here, it's, that's quite, quite a bit for us to absorb in the budget. This is a local control issue. It gives you the control to determine where we should be and what we need to do for, what's best for Oconee County schools. It would reduce your flexibility to meet those local needs and maintain competitive salaries and benefits for our staff. You know, we've done some great things the last couple of years, and the last year, y'all implemented the steps. That step increase is about what we would have lost in the last three years. So just for a frame of reference in the dollar amounts. The local five-mill share, as I mentioned last month, also for QBE will be impacted. This is a piece legislation was calculated, will be calculated on the higher digest value, which is based on a non-adjusted property value. So even though the property values will stay at the inflationary rate, which is about three, depending on where they, they end up, 3% or around there. And again, that would be so when the state does the QBE formula, that'll take our, further reducing our revenues from that. That's, it's part of the calculation for QBE. And just a little bit about the five-mill shares, it refers to the amount that they, the, part of the formula is, we have to levy a required tax by code section on what that is for the local five-mill shares. So it's, then it gets deducted from the QBE earnings of the school district, where the district contribution is derived by that, and they call it a five-mill. So it's basically five-mills of property tax. But it's required by code section that we do that and levy that tax, and then it gets deducted from our, our formula. I know it's very convoluted, but the QBE formula is very convoluted also, so be glad to talk about that more with y'all if you need to have any more questions about it. And at this time, I'll take any questions because that concludes my report.
I do have a couple of questions. If you could jump back to that slide that you have up right now. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So we look at this last bullet point, the local five-mill share. So the tax digest is essentially bifurcated, so there will be two different tax values in place. One tax value that is assigned for the QBE, so where the state takes the first five mills from our local taxpayers and redistributes that across school systems across the state. And as I, if I'm correct, Oconee County receives none of those monies back.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the second piece of that tax digest will be what the local taxpayers here in Oconee County get to keep to fund their schools, which will be the lower tax digest. So if I look out over time and I understand what you're saying correctly, those first five mills will become more valuable over time than the next five mills, with those first five mills going to fund other districts, assuming that Oconee County in the future is not a recipient of QBE monies. And then the next five mills, or the first mill afterwards, will be less valuable to the local taxpayers.
I would agree with that statement.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was, as we're thinking through this, because it is, there's a lot to unpack in this.
Yes, sir.
So thank you. One other question. Having not scheduled these types of meetings in the past, since it's specific to this particular legislation, I know that we've scheduled other hearings in the past. Are there, did the legislation put any other requirements on a board to be in the scheduling of these meetings, or the scheduling of these public hearings?
No, sir. There's no language that says the board has to do that. It just says if you intend to opt out, you have to go back to the ad that we, we posted.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I would like to confirm as a new board member, no decision, no opinion, no unified decision as a board has been made on this. There's a hearing process, which I hope, you know, a campaign's an incredible thing because you get to talk to a lot of people, get to hear from a lot of people. And there is a desire for transparency. There's a desire to be listened to. There was a vote on this. 64% of the public said, yes, we, we support this homestead exemption tax. I haven't been shy with anyone about my opinion, that the time to educate people on an item on the ballot is before the election, not after. So I think it behooves this board and everyone to be a part of this conversation about whether we opt in, whether we stay out. Because at the end of the day, it is a very complex issue. It is very convoluted, as you said. And I think we really need to go into this open-minded to listen, from, from our standpoint, listening to taxpayers, but also from the community's standpoint, to maybe get some more clarity about this particular resolution and what it means. So I've talked to people and they think it's a done deal. The school board's doing this. We've approved this. I just want to confirm that is not the case. This is a hearing process.
That's exactly right. Just as I mentioned, the law says this is what you have to do. The ad must say you intend to opt out. Even if you hadn't made that decision yet, the language says the intent is to opt out.
And Peter, we have to submit this by March 1st. Is that correct? Our final, if we make a decision to opt out, it's got to be by March 1st. Is that correct?
No, sir. We have to have the package into the Secretary of State's office by March 1st.
Okay.
So there's a whole package you have to, if you do move forward, there's a resolution that would need to be adopted. Along with that, the documents of proof of the advertisements, that's why we've advertised in the local newspapers of general circulation. We'll have to do cut sheets on those. We have to printouts of our ads on the internet, so our social media, and that press release, and include those as exhibits when we submit the final package to the Secretary of State's office.
So we're working on a pretty tight timeline. So that leads me to my next question is, do you have any feeling on when they'll determine what inflationary rate they're using?
We haven't heard anything on that, sir.
So we may not have to make a decision without knowing that.
That's correct. Yep.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to go back to local control, and I think that's an important piece that you mentioned in that even if we ended up that we did opt out, well, I think two things are key. Well, one, go back to that we, this is a one-time, if we don't opt out now, then they said we can never opt out again.
You get one chance at it.
Okay. And then the local control piece, so it's not going to change necessarily immediately mean higher taxes. I mean, that means that we still have further decisions to make and all the exemptions that we have stay in place, and the, the local people will still have all the same mileage rate hearings and citizen concerns will have to be taken into consideration. It would just keep the status quo where we had local control.
Absolutely. That's correct.
Yeah, we wouldn't be handcuffed by what may happen in the future by these, something that we chose to do or not to do this year.
That is correct.
I have one final question. There's a provision I saw when I was reading through this bill that there's an opportunity to add a loss. Is that applicable to us or just to county and city governments?
Could you repeat that?
So in, in the HB 581, they, they speak about if you do opt out, or if you stay in, there's an ability to add a one-cent local option sales tax to that.
Not, the school districts do not have that option. The, the counties and cities do, but it was specifically written in the language that school districts do not have that opportunity to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Operations with Dr. White.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. Operations has three informational items for this evening. The first informational item for operations is an update on our energy report. Our kilowatt usage per day for 1,000 square feet has been updated for the month of November. The second informational item is our transportation update. For the previous month, we had 25 field trips, 63 athletic trips, 30 special education trips, 162 buses deployed, for a total of 9,334 miles. And our last item is an update on school nutrition participation for the month of December. Board members, you'll see that we saw a decrease in participation for breakfast of 0.11% and an increase of lunch of 3.03% as compared to December of 2023. This concludes the operations report unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So it's Mr. Ricketson.
Good evening. The Oconee County Schools' Operations and Facilities January 13th, 2025 Board of Education Report contains two items of information. The first item of information is the League Custodian Meeting was held on Thursday, December 12th, and was hosted at, by the team at High Scholes Elementary School. The team discussed paper towel dispenser procedures, winter preparedness, and the holiday shutdown. Our custodial teams are being commended for their rigorous work ensuring that our schools are clean for health. Second item of information is the construction update. As, as you're accustomed to seeing, the ISE is, continues on. We have a, the punch list grows shorter and shorter. A good bit of work was accomplished over the Christmas break. We've got a few things planned for the Martin Luther King Weekend as we finalize the last few items that are left. Second item, second construction update is the district-wide generators. As you can see from the pictures, they've installed concrete pads at the schools, installed the conduits in the, in the buildings, within the kitchens and the electrical rooms. We are waiting on the generators to arrive. We're expecting them to start arriving in early March. And that concludes the operations report unless there are any questions.
Thanks, sir. Next up, we have Communications from Mr. Cockwood.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom. Good evening again, board members and Dr. Branch. The Communications Report this evening contains two items of information. The first item of information is December social media impressions. Oconee County Schools had 34 social media posts in December, and the average impressions was 11,468. As a reminder, that is the average number of times a post was displayed on a screen. Seven posts averaged more than 10,000 impressions, led by North Oconee's wins in the state semifinals and the state championship game in football. These posts appeared on 76,000 and 65,000 screens respectively. The post for OCS closing due to a power outage had more than 23,000 impressions, and the community helped pass that word along with 120 shares between 5:50 AM and 7:00 AM. 24 of the 34 posts reached 5,000 impressions. For the month, Oconee County Schools gained 246 followers, giving the district more than 21,500. In addition, the OCS newsletter released on December 20th had 8,642 unique opens, which is a rate of 68.9%. The industry average for education is 39.5%. We thank the parents, students, community members, businesses, and media outlets that follow and engage with our social media accounts. December's numbers were the highest ever in school history, school district history. The second item of information is the December 2024 highlights video. And that concludes Communications. They'll shave any questions for me.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Communications to the Board. Have anybody signed up for Public Communications?
We have no citizens signed up this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have action items.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom. The first action item is our Oconee County Schools Board Attorneys. As a reminder, board members, each January, we bring forth recommendations for the attorneys that will represent the school system and ask for your approval on that. Excuse me, there's been no change to our attorneys. We continue to recommend Hall Booth Smith and PKK N as our two legal counsels, and recommend approval at this time.
Need a motion? Second. All in favor?
Up next is our 26-27 Academic Calendar. Just for clarification's sake, 25-26 will not have a fall break. We have had that question, so we are not amending our 25-26 calendar. This is a recommendation to approve the 26-27 Academic Calendar as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? We have a need to adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes, and we need a motion to do so.
I will make a motion that the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Second.